This is good body notice with the prime data and the ten known agenda. The primary posted in public place. The director of such as to announce in November sixteen thousand twenty three. It depends the climate so basically back in the rest of Plainsboro news on November sixteen thousand forty three. And follow the township in first on November sixteen two thousand twenty three.
Mr. Patel.
Yes, speak up.
Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Laverro. Mr. Shiktel.
Yes.
Mr. Pankov.
Yes.
Mr. Bag.
Yes.
Miss Bari.
Yes.
Miss Applegate.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers.
Yes.
Mayor Morata.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman.
Here.
And Chairman Carr.
Here.
Was it a vote?
We have a forum. Thank you. Okay. Public comments or open the floor to public comments. Please step up the microphone, take your name and address for the record and as to be on non-agenda, please. Non-agenda, non pending, please step up. Okay, see none, run. Our first order of business is ordinance two thousand twenty three dash twenty three. I said trust fund development fee collection procedure. Jerry, would you like just give a quick overview?
Yeah, I can do it. It's just an amendment to the existing ordinance on how we collect. In this case, it would be affordable housing trust fund monies. Typically fifty percent is due at the issuance of the building permit and the final fifty percent at the issuance of the first CO. We're just changing it from a building permit to a zoning permit. So the fee, the first fifty percent we do at the issuance of the zoning permit.
Sam, you also in this ordinance, you've changed the person responsible for tracking it.
Correct. If it's a building permit, the construction official tracks it. If it's a zoning permit, the zoning officer tracks it. So we're changing on who's responsible for the collection mechanism. As a procedural amount, I've always collected it and done it, but it's easier if I can collect it at the zoning permit rather than a construction permit.
Right.
Okay, that's why it was the other question was why was the change implemented?
So this comports with affordable housing rules? All right. Thank you.
Sam, when is the zoning permit issued, chronologically speaking?
The zoning permit would be issued once the applicant has shown compliance with all the outstanding condition and any planning board resolution entering into development council, revising their plans, posting performance guarantees. And then Fran and I, the township engineer, and I would sign off on the site plan or the subdivision plan. And then the applicant would submit actual construction drawings to my office. I would review it to make sure it's in compliance. And then I would collect the affordable housing fee now. And then I would sign off on that and submit it to the construction department so the building plans could be reviewed by them.
And then I have one more question. You say in one of the whatever the resolutions that there would be a burden on the developer if it wasn't in this manner, then what's the burden on the developer?
Well, they wouldn't get their zoning permit, which means that's a prior approval. They couldn't apply to the construction department. But if they had paid the first fifty percent and they were applying for a CO, we just wouldn't issue the CO until they made final payment.
Thank you.
Sam, just just for opening the address. You are the first star, right? Any permit application unless you sign off permit department and
That's that's correct. I'm a prior approval, so the construction department will not accept any construction permits until I sign off. And that lets them know that all prior approvals, planning board or zoning board resolutions have been complied with. And then the construction department can start their twenty day review of their building permit applications.
Anybody else comment? I want to take a motion to approve two thousand point three dash point three.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Shiktel.
Yes.
Mr. Pankov.
Yes.
Mr. Bag.
Yes.
Miss Bobby.
Yes.
Miss Applegate. Councilwoman Jivers.
Yes.
Mayor Morata.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman.
Yes.
Chairman Carr.
Yes. Next order of business is ordinance two thousand twenty three dash twenty four. Off traffic street improvements development fee collection procedure.
Ten percent would be due at the issuance under this new ordinance at the zoning permit. And the remainder ninety percent will be issued prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy.
Any questions, discussion? There are none on any motion to approve two thousand twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Shiktel.
Yes.
Mr. Pankov. Miss Applegate.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers.
Yes.
Mayor Morata.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman.
Yes.
Chairman Carr.
Yes. Okay, next order of business, application CD twenty three dash away. West Windsor, given a school district, we have long range facility plan. Can you step up the microphone?
Good afternoon, Kirk. Good evening. My name is Brandon Croker. I'm an attorney at the Camagnolo Law Group here on behalf of the West Windsor Plainsboro Regional School District Board of Education. With me tonight have Dr. David Aderhold, Superintendent of Schools, George Duthy, Board Architect, and also Steve Schreier, Board Architect from FB HD Architects and Planners. So like me to guess swear the witness is in or ask the architects about their qualifications.
We'll have we'll swear them all in at the same time.
Sure.
Have them stand up.
If you could say. You swear or affirm that testimony about to give me the truth. So it's one or for please say your full go around each please say your full name and spell your last name. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. And just preliminarily also Jim and ask the architects. I'll ask both George and Steve, your license is current. Or in the state of New Jersey, sorry. Have you tested by before planning boards before?
Yes.
Okay. You've been accepted as an expert?
Okay, intention accepted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're here tonight to request a courtesy review of the board's long range facilities plan pursuant to the municipal land use law under NJSA forty colon fifty five D dash thirty one. And specifically concerning the potential acquisition of property. Two twenty one and two twenty three Southfield Road, block twenty point oh seven, lots twelve and fifteen. I know the board is presently under contract to purchase both properties and we are waiting DOE approval. And we're here tonight only concerning the potential acquisition. Once the the specific development plans are developed, we'll be back before the board and we'll be happy to hear. Have the board review and and give the or the opportunity to make recommendations. Lot twelve, it's our understanding is in R dash one C zone and lot fifteen is R dash twenty. And it's our understanding both zones recognize schools as a permitted conditional use. And we've seen the planners review letter dated November fifteenth and it noted that the acquisition appears to be consistent with the master plan. So I'll ask maybe I'll start by, is can Dr. Aderhold maybe to come up? And just speak generally about the board's interest in the property and the reason for the.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to Mayor Morata, to Councilwoman Jivers, to Chairman Carp and members of the planning board and professional staff. Thank you for taking the time this evening. I've had the pleasure of representing the Board of Education this evening and I've had the great pleasure of representing the school district over the past fifteen years. During that time, we've put expansions on eight of the ten schools, four, four during that time in West Windsor. So I've had the opportunity to appear before you before. So tonight, we're here for the longer to review or the courtesy review of the long range facilities plan, which is is a component of code when we're making some changes and which need to be reviewed in conjunction with your master plan. We have submitted the acquisition to the Department of Education, which requires us to do a minor amendment for the long range facilities plan. So when you acquire property, it's a minor amendment. When you build on the property you acquired, it's a major amendment. So it's a minor amendment that's been submitted and has been acknowledged by the Department of Education as in conjunction with the review of the long range facilities plan. A specific within that, obviously, as Brandon just mentioned, is the acquisition of two twenty one and two twenty three Southfield. This is known as the Prime Farm. You may also know it as the Polly Field property with the sign out in front as you're going up Southfield Road, past the McCaffrey's on the left before you cross into Plainsboro from a visual standpoint. That property is in totality over twenty eight acres. To give you context of size related to other school properties, Dutch Neck and Wykoff are fourteen acres each. Alright, so it's equivalent to two of our current elementary schools. I'm pleased to report that at the October seventeenth board meeting, the Board of Education unanimously approved the acquisition of land and entered into an official contract with the Prime and Hibbs families. This is a property that we have had a desire for for quite some time before Mrs. Prime had passed. We had been in contact with her through her, through her family. Then, of course, with the pandemic, things slowed down. And then it came back to light about a little over a year ago. And there's a year of back and forth in negotiations and working with the families. As we do a DOE submission, there's at least seventeen different components that are required, including phase one, phase two, environmentals and surveys and whatnot. All that work was submitted for us to submit to the Department of Education for their review. It's buying land for a school district is almost like reverse attorney review. Everything's agreed to on the front end and then you submit it to the department for them to review and check the boxes to make sure you've done everything in compliance with the acquisition. So we're in that review and by code, it's a ninety day review period. And the Department of Ed grants themselves an automatic sixty day extension. So it could take one hundred and fifty days. So it's a nice little provision they built for themselves. So somewhere in early twenty twenty four, we should hear back from the department. As a component of their review, they also submit to the DEP to ensure that the DEP, and we've already done work with our environmental consultants to ensure that we won't have a problem when we get to the DEP. But the DEP still does a review as a component of their checklist. As you very much know, there's a tremendous amount of movement happening within our community as a result of residential growth. Majority of the residential growth, as it impacts the district, is on the West Windsor side of town currently. Working with both the professional staff and Mayor and Sam has been phenomenal in my fifteen years here in district as a partner in helping us identify properties. We have had our eye on properties. Many a times, we've been in negotiations with three other properties that fell through or that we removed ourselves because it didn't comply with environmental or where we found that it was on a state recreation list and the owners weren't aware. So there's been things over time that we've pulled back on. This particular property is ideal in being in a nice center part of the district with respect to being near the border of both Plainsboro and West Windsor. And it also, you have sixty percent of the children are from West Windsor. So right now, West Windsor students don't fit in West Windsor schools. And as we're surging at our elementary schools, especially in certain grade levels, Dutch Neck's at one hundred and eleven percent capacity currently. We are definitely at a point where we have properties coming on board that are going to send to Hawk Village, Grover and and South. We put expansions on Grover and South. We put an expansion on Hawk. We have not put an expansion on Dutch Neck. And quite honestly, fourteen acre property, it's been built on multiple times. There's not a lot of room at Dutch Neck without further infringement towards property owners and towards and it's it's not something that we're considering, but it's it's an obstacle that we have to overcome. And we can build more at Hawk, but a same exact problem comes in place. To what end? How big do you build a Hawk without acquiring something else? Where it doesn't feel like an elementary school, it already can fit over nine hundred students. Building out to a twelve hundred student K three elementary school doesn't sound reasonable, practical, or it would take out fields and playgrounds. So we really do have some challenges in front of us. So as a result also of the amount of actions that's come forward with affordable housing and the number of developments that our store property owners that are sort of holding with the hopes of being considered in round two of the twenty twenty five affordable housing, there has not been a lot of property owners of this kind of size willing to sell to a school. And if they are willing, the prices are astronomical. One property owner on five seventy one wanted a million an acre. This is coming in at about just over one hundred and forty thousand an acre. So it's for twenty eight acres. And this is being purchased out of capital reserve dollars, so there'll be no bonding and there'll be no additional tax burden to the taxpayers for the acquisition of land. Building a school is a whole different conversation. That requires us coming back in front of you. That requires us going to the township voters for a bond. As I mentioned that we had, we purchased this property, but I thought maybe we'd pause and give George an opportunity. Or we're purchasing the property with the expectation of building what will most likely be an elementary school. What the size and scope of that is and the configuration of grades, all too premature to even. But we do believe it will be at the elementary level. That could potentially change, but I think we're talking about some form of configuration within our district of an elementary grade level facility. Want to give George the opportunity to talk to you briefly just about high level, what is a long range facilities plan? And what's the intention of it from a Department of Ed standpoint? So George, do you mind?
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone again. It's been a little while since I've been here. As Dr. Aderhold was saying, the long range facility plan is a requirement of the of the law. It's administered by the Department of Education. And what is it really? It's it's a requirement that requires a school district to report in every five years. Or when they do a major construction project that affects capacity or enrollments or moves students around, okay? So that's really the conditions under which you have to do a major amendment to the long range facility plan. So West Windsor did theirs in twenty twenty one when they were required to update for some major projects that they did and they received their approvals. Okay, so they do not have to do another major amendment to the long range facility plan until twenty twenty six or which is unlikely, they do a major project that will affect the reconfiguration of the school. Or the enrollments. Now, sometimes there will be a technical aspect where we will have to, because we did a shifting with some renovations. They do require us to make that amendment to the plan, okay, as a major amendment. So those are the conditions. The acquisition of the property by West Windsor Plainsboro is a minor amendment to long range facility plan because nothing's been built on it yet, okay? I want to touch upon a little bit about the land acquisition procedure with the Department of Education. It is a very rigorous process. It is not by any stretch of the imagination, a walk in the park, okay? There is both a phase one and phase two site assessment. There is what's called an environmental site report. Utilities are verified. Zoning is looked at. All of the DEP screenings are done for wetlands and habitats and waterways and stormwater management and so on. And many other aspects as well. As Dave said, a seventeen item checklist and within that checklist, other items that have to be done. So it does take a while to get done. So there's a lot of due diligence done and I can say that this is a great opportunity for the district. It is hard to find parcels of land that can pass that rigorous due diligence, okay? So. Thank you.
So I have a process question, process question. Okay. You're 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 coming before us tonight. Um, as the school district of two municipalities, West Windsor and Plainsboro, do you need to do this whole show again with Plainsboro and get their approval in any shape or form? I mean, I know it's a Westminster property, but it's a school district thing that's over two districts, over two municipalities.
But this is the board that has jurisdiction over this property, given it's the patient.
Okay, so it's not like Plainsboro has or has any say in any of those types. No, I realize that, but I just know it, but the school district.
Everything with the districts, remember, we're two county, two municipality, two different police departments, two different prosecutors, everything is depending upon the process. So because this is a planning board review, it's it's a West Windsor process.
Okay, okay. Only West Windsor only.
West Windsor only.
Thank you.
Because the Board of Education, that's that's all members of the board.
And from the Department of Education standpoint, we are, we're West Windsor, because that's where the Board of Education office is located. We're a Mercer County School District from the purpose of the DOE.
Thank you.
You mentioned twenty eight acres, why David Noah reports says twenty five acres? So why the discrepancy?
Which quarter?
I'm I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Yeah, it's
The survey also says twenty five foot one.
Five acres and you mentioned that this probably twenty eight acres, so we did the correct one.
No, it's definitely twenty eight.
But I do think we have a we have and I don't know if that would give.
I'm looking at the info box, Lord, right?
Well, that that was mentioned on page two of David's report.
Online, my assumption is to be could buy that information.
Mrs. Hibbs, Muriel Hibbs, Brian, total. So that's where my recollection came from. So I do, I do understand pointing out is a fair point. We'll have to verify.
I think there's a minor discrepancy between what's in the the recorded deeds in terms of acreage and the tax, you know, the tax math records.
We just saved you like three or four hundred thousand. Twenty one district proposed enrollments, the numbers are going down inside. Is that, is that not the case anymore because I'm a student now?
Mr. Carr, with respect to the current enrollment, we're just around nine thousand. So we have had some slight drops in a decrease. What wasn't predicted at that time was the pandemic. And during that time, we did see the number of students coming in, especially from our international community decrease in in kindergarten. So our kindergarten numbers the last four years have decreased both in West Windsor and in Plainsboro. With the increase of full day, we have seen some increase with our current kindergarten enrollment. I I would say that the the enrollment that you have, that we have standing is one part, but we currently have sixteen hundred and sixty units being constructed in live time. We have four thousand seven hundred and seventy units that have been approved by planning boards in West Windsor. And another nine hundred, well, including in that number is nine hundred units that Plainsboro is currently discussing with the Plainsboro Nursery with a prediction of over nineteen hundred growth students. So even if we're at nine thousand, we're going to crest ten thousand.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Not off the top of my head, Mayor.
Point five eight.
Well, well, there's a prediction in our our numbers of what we could anticipate per type of yield. And you, so you get a prediction of point five two or point five three, depending on town, home, apartment, condo, point seven three for housing stock that has been matured. When housing moves in and new housing over one, one point three, one point one three. And that's just at partial percentages of children when you're hearing the yields. So it's just a demographer's way to talk about percentages per unit. So it's, but on average, one plus for a home. So depending on what happens with future residential developments that this body will play a role in, and I know you can't factor us into that under, under the law. It does impact what we need to then think about with respect to how we're gonna, how we're gonna arrange the facilities. There's something else that comes into play for us, which is capacity of a school is all based on not only, not only the number of kids that are coming to it, but how you use the facility. Right? So if you have more special needs programs in place for, let's say, multiple disabilities or autism, that also brings OTPT speech and what other services. The DLI program, the dual language immersion program, brings some additional needs in different, different parts of the program. Our growth in our ELL students or English language learners, also known as your multi-language learners. There could be other pullout spaces needed for all that. We're seeing a change in the full day K has taken rooms that were used for half a day. And now, now you need more. So we had four kindergartens at Dutch Neck, now we have eight, right? So you need more, more room. So we're tight, some of it self inflicted because we went to fill a full day K, which I'll own, which because it only took us fifty years as a community to get to full day K. But literally nineteen seventy three to two twenty twenty three. But it does, it it does demand you pay attention to the needs of our community, not just for now, like we could, we could build on this in four, three, four years. Or if the, well, we really can't with the planning and bonding, right? Because planning and bonding is three years right there. But let's say four or five years to have a school facility on it, or it could be somewhat longer. It's going to be driven by the the growth that comes into our community. And that is a tricky proposition, you know, by the time North opened, they put on it, they were adding in addition to North. Right? So it's all going to be depending upon how fast the community numbers bounce back with school age children. But I can tell you with that we see is starter homes are usually not here in WWP, right? Families are usually moving in with families. They're not moving in and then having a family. So what's very difficult for us is to predict kindergarten. Right? It's it's very, because you track, you track kindergarten based on birth data. So again, you don't see a lot of families coming in and then having three children. They might move in with two and then have another. But when we track based on a geocode birth data to local hospitals, you would think we're going to have no one in kindergarten in five years, right? Our, a lot of our community moves in. So it's, we have to look at trend data. And I have a spreadsheet with about eighteen years of of enrollment at the elementary schools that we predict. And we see, we've seen a historical bump of eighteen to twenty two percent in first grade because we had half day K. Now we have to rethink of that because we went to full day K. So it's a fun problem.
Are those demographic numbers that you are mentioning so many kids per housing type? I remember that Stan Katz had developed it originally. Um, I remember that Stan Katz had developed it originally for the school district. Has, have his, are those still his numbers or have you updated them with some new model?
Back in twenty eighteen, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we updated, did a new demographic study. We used Dr. Richard Grip, um, with statistical forecasting. He's, he, he's a professor of demographics and he also does this work, a former math professor. We sent the report to Stan because, um, and, and, and he, uh, gave us great feedback on the report and the methodologies that were used. So we sort of, he was a legend in the community with respect to being on the Board of Education. And there's, there's, there's stories about Stan, like literally greeting every new family to try to figure out the prediction of years gone by, but his numbers held for many years. And then some of the, some of the calculations and some of the factors that it changed after Stan left the board started to change. And, um, but his numbers and his methodology held for a long time. So we have updated it. The pandemic has, has sort of blown up everyone's, um, demographic predictions. Um, and in districts, it's districts across New Jersey are down collectively, New Jersey's down eighty thousand students um, in the last, in the last five years. And which would just for big picture with one point four million students, that's essentially, uh, one, you know, one grade level. Thirteen grades, right?
What's a square footage? You're contemplating square footage of the, the school?
Not contemplating at this time, it's premature.
But would it ever be used for, um, like special needs?
It's, every school will be used for special needs. We'll have a responsibility in every facility to ensure that we have a continuum of programs, so yes. And would, would it be an individual only specialty in school? No. Well, yeah, and, and I, I think it's so, so as, so as you, George, what George was just reminding me is not contemplated in the models that we had in twenty eighteen was we used to send over a hundred and thirty students out of district, students that needs we could not meet. We now are sending just under ninety students out of district. And it's not that we, about ninety.
Nine?
Nine zero.
Nine zero.
Now, it's not that we have forty less that are getting high level of services. It's now where we've brought more students back because we've built programs. So we have a non-verbal autism population at the K five level currently that houses approximately one third of town center. Um, right? And that is a population of students that used to go out of district. We believe that we should be serving the needs of students in district. We just entered into a lease with the option to purchase at seventy two Grover's Mill Road, which is the Montessori to the left of High School North, across the street from Millstone River. We're in year two of a five-year lease with the right to purchase in year four, in year five, and I have every expectation that we're going to make that recommendation. We're now brought our eighteen to twenty two year old population to the Montessori, removing them outside of High School North, opening up some space, but building a better program for our multiply disabled eighteen to twenty one year olds, twenty two year olds. Reason I'm saying twenty one, twenty two is the, during the pandemic, the governor and the code allowed one additional year for some students that were impacted by COVID and it said exceeded the twenty one year age. So we're really working hard to build the programs for more students. So yes, special needs students will be factored into this determination. And it's possible that we think of a different population that's out of district because we can build a building thinking about that population in need. So I have every expectation, if it's built in my, in my tenure, we would be doing something like that.
Really a two-step process. We're here tonight about the acquisition.
Right.
You know, through all the owners of process of the T U A, and then once we have, uh, further specifics, we'll be back for this tour, uh, with, with further details on that.
Yeah, I presume we'd have to go out for referendum?
So, look, if you, if you assume a school is at least a million dollars a classroom. Right? So when you build, and that's taking, I, I factor that into all the common spaces, the percentages of gym and cafeteria, main office and nurse. But if you just say, how many rooms do you want to build? You want to build thirty five rooms, you should factor thirty five to forty million. Then you can start going to, do you have to connect to sewer? Do you have to look at sewer capacity? Do you have to look at water and all those kinds of things? Now, site work is a whole nother dollar you have to add on top. So yes, we, the district doesn't have that, we would have to go to the taxpayers and then, and, and make a plea for why we're making this recommendation. And the taxpayers would have the right to make a decision, do we bond that money? That's another step. And it's, it's a size and scope that has not been contemplated yet. What I do know is if we don't buy it, Sam's going to get it for open space. Or it's going to have four hundred apartments on it. So, or actually twenty eight acres, you can do a lot more damage than that. So, you know, the district is saying, we need to secure land, we know this community. And credit to you and credit to the mayor and his team and credit to the community. This is a place people want to live. And while our numbers may have dropped temporarily, there's no doubt this, our numbers will rebound. House values haven't dropped anytime soon. Aren't, aren't, right? So we're going to see this community explode as residential growth and these units. And Sam's, if, if I'm remembering correctly, by spring through next school year, upwards of twelve hundred units could be coming at us in opening. By the time we do something, we're going to be overcrowded. So we're taking a first step to say, we, we can't even go to referendum on a property unless we have somewhere to build it. So this is a proactive move by the district to say, we know growth is coming and we know we're going to have to think about strategically, we've built out on eight of the ten schools. Dutchneck, which is li- literally landlocked, or you're going to impede on the neighbors. And Millstone River are the two schools in my time that we haven't expanded. And I've been superintendent for eleven years here for fifteen. And in those fifteen years, we've expanded on eight schools. So Millstone, we could do something, we have a field to the right, maybe. We could do a little something, but it's a four or five school with no bathrooms. Meaning no classroom bathrooms. And then I have Dutchneck, those are the two schools to build out on. And Dutchneck's landlocked. Anything I do there is going to take out the playground, go into the fields and impede on the neighbors. And I promise you, the minute I do that, I'm going to have to come into code compliance and have to do things with drainage, which is going to impact my parking lots, which is going to push further into the boundaries. Right? So you can see, we have an issue of what's our next step? So we're taking a very, we've been, and Sam and the mayor know, we've been looking for property for a long time. And this is a beautiful property, which gives us the ability to put boundary around it because there is twenty eight acres, this is a tree farm, a former tree farm. So it's, it has a gorgeous, um, setting. Um, and you'd want, you know, you'd want to create some kind of visual buffer with the community, at least I would, that's how I would envision it. Um, so it gives us a lot of opportunities here.
Curious about your, um, you're talking about using this land potentially for an elementary school.
Yeah.
Um, so what happens to your middle schools and your high schools? In terms of getting all those elementary school students in there? Do you have the capacity in those, with all those additions that you've made? Or do you anticipate making further additions to those schools?
Fortunately, as part of the proactive planning to the growth that we saw coming, we've added capacity at both Grover Community and South. Um, and, and so we have the ability to fit five teams at each of those schools. Uh, a team equals about a hundred to a hundred, currently have four. So we have the ability to add near four hundred students to each, yeah, to North. So North has had an addition in the past, since once it opened, it added an addition. But it does require us in the future, if we are going to do something, we may have to add a couple of science classrooms at North. But we have the, the seat capacity to go bigger. It's just, we don't have enough science rooms. We have four empty science rooms, not rooms. If you calculate eight periods a day or six periods a day, but eight periods in the schedule across all the science rooms, there's four rooms across all the periods that are open. The rest are used, our kids love science, as you might, you might have seen. So they take more than one, they take, but we're down to four rooms available anytime in our schedule that have labs. So we would do, we'd have to do, address that down, down the road. But that might be four to six rooms, that's not going to be, um, a massive addition to North. But North is our largest property, North is ninety acres. So we have some room, we just have to make some slight configurations, but that's for a different planning board.
I mean, just to be great, uh, you have to get, and you've asked for several sites and we sometimes see, yes, no. Fortunately, the Sanders Farm was on their list of possible school sites and that prevented us from uh, going through front preservation, they agreed to take it out of their, uh, possible school sites and we lose this. So it's a win-win really, we reserve Sanders Farm through, uh, state fund and preservation and this cycle is pretty percent of the cost. For that one, and so that's been made for, uh, for us, so.
Oh, with respect to, um, with respect to bringing a form, uh, plans in front and going through D O E approval, it would, we couldn't do a thing if we didn't get the bonding, so.
So those only property?
Oh, no, there's a. They're, they're separate, they're separate, separate financial actions. Yeah. So yes, yeah, so we would, we would buy, we.
In fact, they, they don't build school in thirty years, they can sell it back, maybe what they want.
Right.
So.
Yeah, we can, there's plenty, there's many districts that have, uh, parcels of land that they own. Um, the expectation would be that this is an earlier than later, most likely move with respect to going to the community. This is, this is probably in the next three to five years, we'll be going in front of the community for some form of uh, discussion around bonding for the, for facility. That being said, we can't even have that conversation unless we have somewhere to build it. And you, and usually they're separate actions.
I mean, there's no concrete plan right now to build. They're just having to decide so.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
That's future.
Right.
Like the trans maybe stop with this property and they have no tools to build it.
Yeah.
Sell it?
Yeah, as long as it meets the conditional, the, the approved uses, we could technically sell it in the future.
Why? I know better. But see, if, if they decide to say it's not going to be next fifteen, twenty years, they're not, they're just buying and keeping it in case they need it.
Yeah.
So that they don't start.
Well, it won't exist in fifteen to twenty years, it will be something, it's going to be open space or it's going to be a residential unit. It's not going to be there for a school. I mean, I, I, I knowing, talking to the professional staff, there are no properties and tracks like this available to put us, to put a school on. Uh, there, we might be able to find something in, in Plainsboro if we got Princeton University to sell us something, but it would be really trying to work with a, an owner over there, which is not out of the question yet. And there's other properties that, depending what happens to S R I, what happens to the former Howard Hughes, uh, any of those kind of tracks come on, we're, we're probably looking at, looking for another piece of property. We're, one track is not going to be enough if any of those other things get built out too far. And that's not, you do what you need to do, but I'm going to have to protect the, I'm going to have to protect the education of the kids and the staff long-term and beyond me. Those, these decisions may be beyond my time as superintendent, but I need to be thinking of the board of ten years, fifteen, twenty years from now.
We're just really trying to look, equally looking, and I don't want to lose this property because as we've heard, there's, there's, you know, limited, uh, limited supply in terms of product, like, you know, and, and the community has a lot of great, like wonderful school system.
I think we also just have to acknowledge and credit to the Prime family and the Hibbs family, a willingness to think of this, the district and the community and willing to sell to the district versus hold out for affordable housing or something else. They, they see the, the, the value and their family's been, you know, longtime contributors as a former mayor, as their father and, um, you know, so, you know, real appreciative of them.
Absolutely, because, uh, it's down to, uh, the, the Board of Education, it gives the subject of the, of the.
Yeah. I just have a quick zoning related question. On C in fifteen, I'm sorry, twelve is in our, on C in fifteen is in twenty. So once they get merged into one property, what?
Split zones a lot, so the zone line would not change, you would just have a zone line.
Zoning requirements, uh, uh, would, would, would come into play.
That's a very interesting question, so, uh, I can answer that, let me just move to that part, so. Exactly, yeah, we're in a little bit of an odd zoning condition here, so, conditions. Very generally in New Jersey, boards only really look at use for schools. So whether standards as well as other concerns regarding transportation, safety, things like that, that's the purview of the Department of Education. So the only real cursory review that a municipality has is whether or not it's permitted or not permitted. This is odd because it's a conditional use, so I consider it permitted, but that's something that the township may want to look at in the future. But as it stands right now, the conditional standards for both districts are the same. So they'd be operating under the same regulations anyway, but really we'd be only looking at the use.
The use, the use for both is the same and the conditions are rather.
Let's, um, have your, 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 um, professional go over the map. You know, just give us a summary of what the map is showing. Can you maybe move the board a little closer so the audience can see?
Well, yeah, Steve, to do the stuff, maybe walk us through, George, maybe, um, maybe bring the easel over so it's easier.
We have our own copy, can more, more for like, uh, well, we need to, we need to swing it out.
So we'll, we'll verify the acreage, I, I believe there was a discrepancy between what's in the public records and the deeds and the tax map, we'll verify that, but, um, subject to that, we'll ask. The property, just generally, um, it's my understanding that the board had, everyone has a copy of that plan or can see it.
Actually, you take the mic off and, you know.
All right. Okay, can you hear it? All right, great. Southfield Road. Okay, and this is the parcel presently not shown on here because this is the, is, there is a, a residential parcel right here, there is a house, residential properties here, right? So there's a little bit topography to this with, stormwater. There's no identity, she's a redland, well for a school. In terms of how things can be placed, it has a nice frontage along Southfield, which is ideal, okay? And it's got a nice shape of proportion to allow, you know, a significant number of recreational fields and open space to maybe be placed towards the back of the site with the school building closer, okay? But again, with this, this frontage along Southfield to take advantage of, you know, the separation, vehicle trap up, and it allows us to make a nice buffer area as Dr. Avril referred to earlier, along the perimeter of the site, there are, there are, uh, woods along the perimeter of this site right here. So it'd be nice, we'd need that large lot of that under disturbed and maybe. Okay? So, um, that's really about all there is to say, this is, this is obviously North, you can see the North there on there. It has a kind of nice orientation as well, the site is very nicely oriented on an east-west axis as well, so. It's a great parcel for school. And they shape you to.
Well, it's cool, we have to have city, city sewer, wa- water?
We have, we have a municipal, we have city water and sewer available right out on Southfield. And we are waiting for little sort of letters from the utilities. But we have sanitary, we have sewer, we have gas, we have access to high voltage electricity, we have all those things available to us on Southfield.
Have you talked to any, you know, any of the residents around the property, around the perimeter of the property? Has there been any outreach to the residents? You know, around the perimeter of the property?
I don't, I don't, I don't believe so.
No, no outreach to the neighbors as we're negotiating for the acquisition of land.
So we, we weren't.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, I think, David, you want to just give us a quick overview?
Specifically, N J S A forty, prior to taking action, necessitating the expenditure of any public funds shall refer the action to the planning board for review and recommendation. And that applies to school boards. Uh, N J S A forty colon fifty five D dash thirty one B, the very next section. Uh N J S A forty colon fifty five D dash thirty one B, the very next section provides a little bit more specificity for what this is and essentially the planning board needs to report by and is consistent with the master plan and it specifically says at least the land use plan and a housing plan. So we looked at the land use plan, the housing element and fair share plan, the community facilities plan, as well as the open space and recreation plan, farmland preservation plan and historic preservation plan. Um I won't touch on all those. I just want to really briefly touch on the twenty twenty land use plan first. It was already discussed. That plan places both of these properties within the low density and medium density land use categories. Those both correspond to zoning districts which permit schools, is that a why I thought, uh permit schools as a conditional use? And there's no recommend, uh no recommended change to that. There's also two goals that are fairly relevant. Goal A is to achieve a desirable balance of nonresidential residential, open space, recreational, cultural, civic and agricultural uses. And goal E, which is to encourage uh or sorry, to support opportunities for nonresidential developments in appropriate locations. So based on that language, based on the land use classification of the site, I believe that this will be consistent with the land use plan element. Regarding our twenty nineteen housing element and fair share plan, that's a very easy one. This site was not identified as a component to address our portable housing obligation. That's very important. Therefore, it's consistent with our housing plan. I I also believe it's consistent with our two thousand twenty two community facilities plan. Uh that plan had estimated based on that the 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 multipliers that provided from that two thousand eighteen study that there'd be approximately one thousand one hundred and twenty additional public school kids added to the district over the next several years, understanding that that projection might need to get looked at in the future again. So while this site is not specifically identified in that community facilities plan, the plan does recommend that the township and the Board of Education continue to monitor guidelines uh what acreages are appropriate. Uh for a elementary school, it was around fifteen to twenty five acres and for a middle school, it was at least thirty acres. This is right next to the cusp for a middle school as well for size. So again, I think that this is consistent with our two thousand twenty two, I'm sorry, our, yes, our two thousand twenty two open space, sorry, community facilities plan. Uh if there's any que-
David, you know, the charts on page three of of your um report. It says R one slash C bulk standards and then and then the table three.
Oh, that should be our twenty bulk standards. Yes, yeah. But again, those bulk standards really would not apply to any type of school construction. So this is just informational about what those districts typically require, but you know, uh a school would not be subject to a lot with or front yard requirements, lot area, simply just looking at the use.
Any, any, any body questions for Dave?
Easy tonight. Thank you.
Right, and this one, I mean, they've been working with us for almost six years since I became uh mayor and looked at important sites that have worked out uh because of various problems and this is the end win win and they gave up on Sanders Farm, present Sanders Farm. And this property, Sam and I were wondering about this as well. Uh so we thought on on and off with the wanted to buy, so they buy it, it's better than we buy.
Okay, um I can, right now I can open up the public. If you wanna comment or ask, if you have any questions, please step up the microphone to your name and add to the record. And on just this application. Anybody? If I wanna say something. Okay.
No one?
Nobody. I haven't seen anybody running up to the microphone.
And just have a quick, a quick uh process question. So should this board find this plan to be consistent with our master plan? I'm assuming that something would be submitted to the Department of Education. Uh is that typically the process with this?
Well, I've seen I've seen boards handle courtesy review applications differently. Sometimes some boards have adopted a resolution, other times courts will do a letter. It I've seen, I've seen them handled differently. I think.
Particularly in the past, the boards never adopted a resolution, even with um building additions. It's usually just a letter that the board attorney writes um and uh for the board chair and will send it over to um Dr. Adherold's office.
That would be great.
This is your long range facility plan for and recovery. Have you looked at other pieces of uh facilities throughout town for any long range plan? You say Dutchneck is in the whole capacity. Unity, I'm I'm thinking and you say you're moving your home.
Well, no, no, if you're
So you're looking for alternative facilities, right?
We're always looking for other facilities. And with respect to the long range facilities plan in front of you, it's not just this property. That's the minor amendment. Right? So it's because we're of the of the acquisition that we're here. Right? There's no, our other facilities are all being earmarked as is. No, it 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 wasn't. It it was, it's transportation offices. It's transportation offices. Our office staff is there. No, it's being used as office space or building and grounds department is there, our technology department there. We can have a different conversation with you as a neighbor if you'd like. But you know, that I haven't heard anything from anyone since twenty fifteen. So I'm here with respect to three twenty one and three twenty three, not here with respect to five oh five Village Road East, which is seems to be what your question is as a backend. Dutchneck School is at full capacity because the way we're using Dutchneck School. It's also at full capacity because the planning board and the township has approved residential developments that sends a dutch and they're only gonna get more crowded when the property out on Old Trenton Road opens. Yeah, because that's where that property will send. The hundred and ninety plus units that were approved.
I think maybe this is a conversation for another time.
It seems very pointed. A conversation you're trying to have as a neighbor through the planning board, but you haven't had the courtesy to speak to me about.
I I think we need to stay on, I think we need to stay on topic and application.
Right, we're here. I was answering a question from one of your.
My only concern was have they considered other facility improvements? I know they approached this.
I'd love nothing more. Well, keep that in mind when we come back for a property expansion in the future.
They are required by state to do a uh facilities plan. And they will, they won't come to us.
That's not your question.
That's why I was asking them, is this the only facility he's looking at at this point?
Right, this is who need to add into their.
That wasn't a question. And you know it.
Okay, we're here tonight about the potential acquisition of of these properties.
I've been here too long. I know, I know what the question was.
Okay, thank you. Is there somebody from the public that wants to say something? I see you standing back there. I'll give you another moment to step up to my
Correct. My comments are related to Southfield. Uh my name is Kristen Epstein. I live at eleven Madison Drive, which uh my backyard fence shares boundary with this property, so I am immediately um affected by this project.
This, this is only a courtesy review. I I'm only courtesy review, but we sworn people in, so I'm gonna swear you in. If you
Just swear me?
Sworn people in, I'm gonna swear you in. If you could raise your right hand.
Oh, sure.
Do you swear or affirm a testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please take your, again, please say.
I I did want to state on the record, I am not opposed to the school.
And if you could say
Purchasing this property. I'm sorry, Epstein, E P S, opposed to the school purchasing this property um of the options available. Ryan family has a right to sell it to whomever they like and and they are allowed to use it for what, you know, this is, this is a fine use of the property. I just wanted, at this point, since before the planning starts of building any buildings on the property, just to consider a few things. One thing, there is a stub road that comes off of West Kincaid Road that goes uh to the it's not north, I guess it's the south part of the property there. Okay, thank you.
My house is right here. There, right here. And uh Southfield also has little stuff that I would leave go from the corner of this property. I just wanted to point out that we as a small residential neighborhood prefer that those roads not be continued and continued, got it connected because it will come in cut through. Um people already driving on a road, they can be connected to cut through, so I appreciate that personally. Um the other thing is any entrances off Bennington. Again, people already who've been in the cut through, so entrance are cheaper. It's a sore move on this property. I believe that what this outline is showing, but it's there's no legend showing that outline. There's the um the hole from the early eighteen hundreds there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody else. I'll entertain a motion, most second by Alan, long favor, see I. Okay, folks, there is close. Okay, um any discussion with them?
No, but I I think Kristen, I I drove around the area earlier today. I I know, I think I know what you're saying. So I guess basically one way in and out in along Southfield Road would be the design, because you don't want people coming off, going through the neighborhoods behind there and traffic, you know.
Do I recall that I don't want that road to continue? So these are all things that are definitely from up during construction and the site plan review.
Right, just just to, we appreciate the comments, but just we're here just strictly on the acquisition of the property and I did planned in terms of access and what's gonna be on the side, that that will be a a further conversation. We'll be back.
Yeah, it's all gonna get lost in the next three to five, ten, fifteen years, whenever you decide to build, you know, notes of things that will definitely anybody else? I'll entertain a motion to approve E B twenty three, they show eight, that it um implies with the elements of the master plan.
So moved.
Move by Erica. Second by okay, uh people roll.
Um No, no, we're good, we're good.
Mr. Chitelle. Mr. Pankov.
Yes.
Mr. Beg.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Applegate.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jivers.
Yes.
Mayor Morate.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman.
Yes.
Chairman Carr.
Yes.
Very much. Jessica, I had to pause. I didn't remember that. You're not an ultimate anymore. That's what caused me to pause. No, Rob, Robin.
Other location is providing a screen, but not as you said.